I'd like to call the January 4th, 2022 Village Board Meeting to Order. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne, Trustees Marport.
Here.
Forster.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Schenk.
Here.
Taka Okafor.
Here.
Is there a motion to nominate a mayor pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the president pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Schenk.
Aye.
Taka Okafor.
Aye.
Okay, we have a form and it's been called to order, so would everyone please stand for the fudge?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think we have any citizens wishing to address the board because I see no one out there, so but I'll put it on the record as we ask. Okay, then next item would be Village Manager Vernon Township Energy Resilience Commission? Resiliency Commission?
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody. Just an update, so at the end of 2021, the village was asked to participate in the Vernon Township Energy Resilience Commission. This was a commission that was started by the Vernon Township government. The purpose of this commission is to explore projects and initiatives within our area in hopes to work towards being more energy efficient within our government operations and communities, and also to work towards reducing carbon emissions long term for the planet. Some examples of some of these eligible projects would be pursuit of solar panels or wind turbines, use of electric vehicles, and addition of charging stations within communities, procurement of a clean energy supply, et cetera. Trustee Forster and I attended the kickoff meeting for this group on December 12th, along with representatives from other village, school, park district bodies in Vernon Hills, Lincolnshire, Buffalo Grove, and Long Grove, as well as representatives from Vernon Township, the Lake County Board, State Representative Dietrich, State Senator Johnson, and representatives from the Office of Congressman Brad Schneider. In your board packet this evening is a copy of the presentation that was shared at this kickoff meeting. This basically provides a review of the goals and objectives of the commission, as well as a proposed structure for this commission. The preliminary focus of the commission is to try and take advantage of anticipated federal and state funding that is expected to come down the pipeline in the first quarter of 2022, primarily being driven by the Build Back Better Agenda that you may have heard about in the news. The goal is that some of that funding will be dedicated toward green energy projects that will funnel through the state and potentially be eligible for local governments to take advantage of. So the hope is that by joining together, the governments in the area can take advantage of economies of scale, which will not only help have an impact on the greater environment, but also make grant applications more attractive and marketable for getting the grant opportunities. The next step in this process, the commission is set to meet again on January 18th. Unfortunately, we have a board meeting that evening, so we'll see how we can be represented at that meeting. At that point, the commission's looking to have a commitment from each of the entities on whether or not they want to participate going forward in the group. The first step is going to be to have an energy consultant come in and provide an assessment for each entity on what opportunities there are for each organization to be more green with their energy. So for example, you know, they might come into the village of Vernon Hills, take an assessment of all of our village facilities and say, you could add solar panels at this building, car charging stations at this facility, et cetera. And then, once we have all of that data as a group, we can come together and see if there's any opportunities to work together on any larger grant applications. An additional step that we're going to be taking as a local community, next week, the school districts, 12873, along with the Park District, Village, and Fire District are going to be meeting to see if there's any local opportunities we could maybe take advantage of as more of a collective Vernon Hills group. So we're also going to be looking to do that at a local level. So really, no next steps needed at this point. Everything as far as our next actions are noncommittal, but we will have more information as we go. And if there's any questions in the meantime, please feel free to reach out to me or Trustee Forster, and we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions from the board?
The only thing I know going back a year, actually two years now, I believe, we had two students from the high school that came in and did a presentation on wind and solar energy around the school, around the V-HAC area, which I have to admit I was very impressed with. And I would probably venture if we would be able to do something in the near future for that. I know they had a plan. I know I talked with Dave, believe me on that going back, so.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Let me respond to that.
Oh, did?
Yeah, we did meet with the two brothers and the high school, Mr. Gilliam. We met with the two brothers maybe two or three different times, but it never made its way off the ground. I think they got back to their studies and some other things that they felt were more pressing for them. But yeah, I think it is a good idea, some of the environmental things we want to do out there.
So the info that in our packet here comes from Veragee, so is that a company that's working with the commission?
Yes, so the commission-
Has the commission chosen just to work with that company, or how does this work?
So that's one of the things we're trying to figure out as part of our next step. So the commission came into contact with Veragee. We're not really sure the origin of how that relationship was established, but they were at the first meeting, and they essentially presented a concept model of how Veragee as a consultant would work with the group on identifying those projects throughout the region, working with us to develop our grant applications and securing the funding.
Okay, so Veragee is a consultant, they're not a provider?
Correct, they're an energy consultant, correct.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea to me.
Any other comments or questions?
Just really quickly, so if I'm looking at like some of these consultants come into the village, that's on the commission's dollars, that on our dollar to bring them in?
Yeah, so the idea is that this would be secured through grant funding. So there may be, so let's say, for example, we did a free assessment, and they said you could pursue solar opportunities at your municipal facilities. We would get an idea of what that cost would be. There would probably be a local match, and at that point, we'd come back to the board for further guidance and direction on that.
So are they acting as green energy brokers in a way, this group, or is this?
No, more helping to facilitate the grant process. So more to come on this. I think when we met on December 12th, the Build Back Better Plan, I think, was in better footing. Since then, I think it's kind of taken a side turn, so we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode, but I think first quarter of '22 is the target for some passage of that, and then grant funding coming thereafter. So our goal at this point is to see if there's any shovel-ready opportunities as a group and go from there, so some more to come.
Does Com, I don't know, maybe Dave, you know this, does ComEd offer like rebates of like we change streetlights over to LEDs or HVACs, high efficiencies in our buildings? Are they offering rebates to us if we have some kind of initiative that you know of?
Yes, sir, they have a number of different programs. We've taken advantage of it. I believe more recently at River Grove subdivision, we went through with all their lights. As long as we buy specific lights and go through the process, they will reimburse us.
So we do take advantage of that when we do that?
We have. We've had them out for energy audits of all their different buildings a few years back, but they're a really good resource for us.
And there are certain things we already have in our facilities, so many of our rooms have automatic lights, so if the sensor goes off and no one's in the room, the lights will turn off, so we already have some of those. That's all I have.
Okay. If there are no other comments from the board of that, okay, then moving on, Chief of Police, chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here tonight with a member of our team. Many of you know Commander Andrew Gillespie. Commander Gillespie has recently been appointed to the Commander of Investigations, which is kind of a key part of our leadership team at, I call the foreheaded monster at the police department, but it's, Andrew's here really to help me introduce to the board the latest version of what we call ESIP, our Engagement Strategies Improvement Plan. The board might remember last year, I provided you with about a six or seven-page document version of our ESIP at the time. And really, as way of background, this has been a real active process for us for over a year and a half, where we're not seeking to generate a document. We really have an ongoing process, and we see this document as being more of a result of the process and very much a conversation starter. It's a context for us to talk about issues with our officers, have our officers have some guidance when navigating some really murky areas that we get involved with in law enforcement. And it's important that we do this, and it's important that we keep in touch with the community so we can meet our community's expectations. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to kind of report to you where we continue to lead the department, the direction that we take, and that we're not done with this. It's very much an evolution and an ongoing process, but I want to start by recognizing, and you'll see on the back of our ESIP card here is, you know, we differentiate different levels of response needed for different levels of crimes. And what I want to assure the village board and the community is that this evolution, these things that we are talking about when it comes to de-escalation practices and what does a community really need, we first and foremost recognize our duty to protect the community. And where there is a threat of violence, where there is violence in the community, where there is a dangerous threat, every man and woman of the Vernon Hills Police Officer stands ready to confront that and take the risk that comes with confronting that, and that's an important part of our job. But we also recognize, as important part of our job it is, it's a small part of our job. It's a very small percentage of the calls and the activities that we engage in involve a threat to life. But many of the calls that we get involved in present challenges, and many times, we are called to try and solve problems that are very difficult to solve. And as police officers, we can sometimes fall into a trap of wanting to solve a problem, feeling that we have a duty to solve a problem, and sometimes that gets us, quite frankly, overreacting. And you can look across the country and see that sometimes these things turn into complete tragedies. And one of the things that underlines our ESIP philosophy here is that I think, and you tell me if you see the world differently, but I think the public doesn't want to see minor police encounters devolve into tragedies. And what I tell our people is, it's not our job to explain how that happens, it's our job to prevent that from happening. And what that means is that sometimes we are going to disengage, sometimes we're going to walk away, sometimes we're not even going to respond, or we're going to respond in an alternate method. And again, this is something that we have been taking on in earnest the last year and a half, and it's a process where we talk about these things on a regular basis. So Village Manager Kevin Timoney came to a recent police staff meeting that we hold every month, and he got to see every shift, every team give examples of how their officers went to calls for service and utilized these principles to de-escalate and to solve a problem in many times a very unconventional fashion. And I just want you to know, I'm very proud of the organization for embracing this. It's something that we started at the top and pushed, but believe me, there's nothing that I can do as a chief to implement this. These are police officers responding to calls and having to experiment and having to decide whether or not this is worth it. And they might have every legal authority to take action, but what we're asking them to do is to decide if they should act. They might have the authority to do it, but is it the right thing to do? Is it something the community really needs us to solve right now? And do we need to solve it right now, or maybe we can wait until these parties, these people we're dealing with, maybe aren't so highly agitated? And we've had some real good, you know, success with that. And the reason I brought Commander Gillespie along is he and Sergeant Burmaster deserve a tremendous amount of credit for taking the last version of this document and squeezing it into two pages. And that's not easy, and we also owe Commander Gillespie's wife a lot of credit because she's a graphic designer. Trust me, there's nothing that him or I could do on our own, so we're lucky to have some help from our extended family, but it's something we're really proud of. We wanted to share with the board this, and I'll ask Commander Gillespie just to give a couple real-world examples of the type of problem solving that our officers have engaged in as a result of this, and we continue to, so. Andrew?
Yeah, thanks for having me tonight. The chief invited me down here specifically to share a couple stories in the frontline, right? So it's easy to look at it on paper, it's a little different when you're out in the field, so you know, I'll give a couple examples. One of them happened quite a while ago, but a lot of businesses in town here, they'll call, asking for police assistance, a dispute with a customer or a patron, and we got a call to a business, a restaurant. The restaurant had a woman come in, make a small order, and then she sat in a booth for many hours, and the business closed, they served the last guest, and she was still there, and they asked her to leave, and she refused to leave. So they called the police, and typically, what happens in these situations is a lot of times, they want to trespass the person. What that means is they don't want that person to return. If they do, they're subject to arrest for criminal trespass. So in order to document that properly, we like to identify the person that we're dealing with. When the officers arrived, they gathered the information they needed, they said they wanted this person trespassed. We started to make our way over to the patron, identified ourselves, she immediately began packing her stuff up and exit the restaurant. So the challenge presents itself for the officer is, okay, my duty here is to identify this person. In the event this person returns, we have, we could take enforceable action. But she was being uncooperative and refused to provide information. This is where our body cameras came in good use. The officer decided, hey, it's not worth putting hands on this person for something so minor, we're going to allow them to leave, we explained to her, she's not welcome back. If she returns, she may be subject to an arrest, and he allowed her to leave. He went back to his computer, screen captured the photograph, and emailed the department, hey, this woman failed to identify herself, but if she returns, the business would like her arrested for trespass. So that was a success. More recently, I'm sure everybody in this room has seen or maybe even involved in a road rage incident. Just last week, we had an incident that kind of rolled into Vernon Hills, it started down in Buffalo Grove. Two cars, you know, chasing each other and, you know, exchanging words at intersections. They ended up landing in an intersection in our town. One refused to leave. We responded, we moved them out of the roadway. One was very adamant, very agitated that he wanted the other driver cited for a minor traffic violation. We could tell he was very excited, in fact, we believed he might have been the aggressor, but that's irrelevant. He was adamant, he wants a ticket issued, and we told him, we're not saying we're not going to issue a ticket, but we're not going to issue it now. There's a lot that goes into writing a ticket, you have to commit to come to court and testify against the person, and he's like, I'm willing to do all that. We told him, okay, if you still feel this way tomorrow morning, we provide our information, give us a call, and we can issue a ticket that time or at least have another discussion. And he again said, no, I want a ticket issued now, and we said, well, no, go home, think about it, talk with your family, and tomorrow morning, feel the same way, give us a call. The call never came. Maybe that morning or that night, he realized, you know, I was agitated, angry, and do I really want to get myself involved in this? And if we had written a ticket, he might have felt compelled to come to court, uncomfortable or not show up for court, and then it's a drain on the court system and us in general. So those are two successful cases, but not all cases are easy, and I'm sure the chief might share times where it might be a little more difficult for us.
Well, and part of the reason I wanted to report to the board is that, you know, there's another philosophy that goes along with this, is that perhaps not taking immediate action may not satisfy a person, you know, a victim or a complainant, but it's a lot easier to say, not now, and reconsider things, and listen, for misdemeanors, the statute of limitation is a year and a half, for felonies, it's three years. We can always take an enforcement action later. It's a lot harder to roll back a criminal charge once we put hands on someone. And so again, that's just an underlying theory here of, if I could boil this card down to two words, it would be slow down. And that's what we really want and expect our officers to do. I think it provides a lot of good results. I anticipate that we might have a bad outcome one day because we underreacted rather than overreacted. And what I tell our officers is, that's my problem if that happens, that I'm the one that has to answer to the community if someone is frustrated that we didn't do enough. But again, my option is to always go back and reconsider, say, a charging decision or arrest decision, and we can probably solve a problem the day after, the week after. But in the unlikely event that any of you get a phone call from a neighbor one day that says, listen, the police came and, you know, they investigated this thing, and I wanted someone arrested, or they didn't do enough, I'm always, I always invite that person to call me and talk, and I'll listen and hear them through, but what we're trying not to do is overreact. And you could look at a lot of this and say, it's really common sense, but we face some really difficult challenges with some really difficult people. We're not always dealing with rational people, having rational conversations, and officers have to be ready to respond, to protect themselves, and so it's a balance we walk. But I can tell you, I think the organization's going in the right direction, but we don't do this in a vacuum. We are the police department for the community. You certainly are our bosses. The community is our boss, and if you have some concerns or questions, I'd love to hear them, and if you don't want to ask me in this venue, certainly give me a call anytime, I'm happy to answer any additional questions. But with that, I'll leave it to Mr. President, you or any of the commissioners who have any questions, I'd be happy to clarify.
Anybody have a comment or question? Yes, go ahead.
Not about the program specific, I just want to say that this is one of the many things that you guys are doing that is on target, and I thought I would at least take this as a moment to mention, and kind of a plug to the community about the Citizen Police Academy, because I neglected to do that, I think a few weeks ago I was planning on doing that, because I don't know how aware the community is of it, but it is a great program offered by the police department to, I think it's a 10-week, once-a-week program of different areas of police involvement, and it's very enlightening, and part of what you talked about here is touched upon in that program, along with many other areas that I think the community isn't unaware of, the police involvement and maybe the challenges that are faced and opportunities that are faced. So I was fortunate enough with some family members to do it the last few weeks, and I think there's going to be a spring one as well.
Yes, there is.
Knock on wood with COVID, so just mentioning it so that I know it's open to all community members to reach out and participate.
It is, and thank you, Trustee Forster. We are planning on doing two, we're budgeting to do two of those programs next year, so there'll be a spring and a fall again, and any member of the community can contact us through our website under Citizen Police Academy and make an indication that they'd be interested in applying there. Thanks.
Trustee Marport?
I have to say that Trustee Forster, she is absolutely correct. I've taken it, and really, you have residents that will see and understand what a police officer has to go through. I personally look at it that the amount of people you have to deal with, very seldom do you see a happy individual, and you take that situation and bring it down. You have to become an individual because of drugs, to minister, to save their lives, so there's a variety of things. But my hat's off to you for all your hard work, and people don't understand it. And I started thinking of a story that was by a salesman of mine, and the reason I'm going is that you take a negative and bring into a point of a positive. And I had a salesman in the automobile business that a customer wasn't happy with the price of the vehicle, and told my salesman that he could take the car and put it where the sun don't shine. My salesman stood back, paused a moment, came back, looked him in the face, and said to the customer, I'll use the name, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, I believe that's physically impossible, but if that's what it takes to sell you a car, I'll give it a try. We sold that gentleman a car, and we sold many other cars. And where I'm going with this is that our police staff is one of the best, and honestly, you have to really take a look at how hard you guys work, and again, my hat's off to you, but please, honestly, take a look at the Citizens Academy, because you'll understand a little bit more what goes behind the scenes and stuff, and it's extremely interesting.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Marport. And, you know, I think that we're fortunate, we're in a community where we feel a lot of support, the officers work hard, they're professionals, but, you know, what I'm here to say is that we're not done developing, we're not done learning, we're not done evolving. I think we can learn from other mistakes we see, we can learn from our own mistakes, and we are, you know, we do control our action and reaction. We can't control all outcomes, and bad things are going to happen, and it's part of what we're trying to really get across here, and, you know, we have five hotels in this community, right? And we see a lot of challenges sometimes, coming from people that might be staying in a hotel, they have disputes, and we have to go and try and solve those problems with limited, you know, limited solutions. And, you know, we could just tell story after story after story of how far do we go to try and solve, you know, try and solve a problem. We're going to go, we're going to try, but sometimes we have to be okay saying, you know, this is just beyond us, there's nothing we can do but maybe potentially escalate it, and so we're going to slow down, and it's not something that comes easy at police officers. We hire type A personalities that want to go fix problems and help people, and there's a balance here we're walking, so thank you.
Well, and the other thing I like about this approach, I learned from our assistant manager, Mr. Petrillo, when I took the academy, you can look at a situation and then you add in one little, well, what if this? And then some other, what if this changes? What if this changes? And every little tiny change you make changes your view of the situation significantly. And so to have this kind of a process that can react and interact, because, you know, it's the famous for every action, there's a reaction, and so everything that you apply, and I thank you for having taught me that, it's good to have this kind of an approach because that allows you to then change as the situation changes as well, instead of going with a predetermined outcome.
Right. Yeah, and sometimes we know what's going to happen, you know, kicking a door is a big deal, and there's times when that's the only option we have, but maybe, maybe there's a crime happening on the side of the door, but it's a maybe, but we know we're going to have a confrontation if we force that door. But it's hard sometimes to walk away where there might be, you know, there might be someone that needs our help on the other side of the door, but it's real easy to get sucked in and say, oh, we have to act. And what this is really causing us to do is slow down and say, do we have to really act? You know, do we know that there's a crime going on that needs our intervention, or maybe there's a dispute? People can yell at each other, and that's not a crime, but sometimes that gets a third party calling us, we get involved, and now they won't cooperate with us. with us, and our instinct is to make sure we can restore the peace. But again, how far do you go over a verbal argument? And that happens all the time. Every week, multiple times a week, we're going to those kind of exchanges where, where we really have to balance, how far do we, how far do we take this?
Trustee Appenheimer, you look like you're gonna...
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask a question, but I think I will. So this sort of relates to the, the concept of public safety, and I was curious about the high-speed chases and what the policy is, and also the traffic cameras that we have, and whether or not that's limited those, and I don't know how much you want to get into any of those sort of things.
No, I'm happy to. I think it's a great, I think it's very relevant. So 30 years ago, you know, here's, here's a direct, is it 30 years ago, we were teaching officers that everybody that flees in a vehicle is not worth chasing. And that was a culture change, and there were officers telling me that, well, if they're running, they're running for a reason, or if we let one get away, then they're all gonna run.
Right.
And 30 years later, they don't all run. But what we learned, what we learned is that the public wants us to balance the risks, the known risk of engaging in a high-speed pursuit with the need to immediately apprehend. It's the exact same balancing process we're working out here on different kinds of calls. Retail theft, you know, listen, we have large shopping centers in our town, lot of retail establishments, we see a fair amount of retail theft. We have to balance our approach to those crimes, because the public doesn't see retail theft as serious as a violent crime, and we, and, and listen, our officers have understood this for a long time, but this, this process allows a structure for us to really continue to get better every time and make sure we are balancing our response. One of the things we've learned is the need to get face-to-face with the complainant on a retail theft, because we get so much bad information via 911, and it's not our telecommunications' fault. They're terrific, they're professionals. But the telephone game itself, you know, just aids in misinformation. And what we don't want is out there pursuing a potential suspect just to get to the victim and find out there wasn't a crime at all. And so that's the kind of balance that we're taking on. You ask about the cameras, we continue to work with our vendor. We've had, in fact, Commander Gillespie's knee-deep in that, in that program. Our automatic license plate reader cameras are up and operational, they've been very effective with limitations of where they're located. We are working with IDOT to have them relocated, but that is a lengthy process. Senator Johnson was helpful in getting us in touch with the right people at IDOT to make sure our applications were working through, and it turned out to be a much larger problem on these, this technology. IDOT was rewriting all the rules, so I hope that in the upcoming weeks or months, that we'll be able to relocate some of those cameras to even more prominent locations that will help us even further, but they work well.
Do we need to budget for more of them?
We are budgeting for, we are budgeting for continuing, and I think that there's actually a private partnership program out there for us, that maybe, we don't need a budget, but some of the, some of the, say, the homeowner associations already have installed some of them, and some of our shopping centers probably will be looking to do this, so.
And have those cameras allowed us to limit the number of actual police chases, because we know that we've got that information on video, and we don't have to apprehend them immediately?
Absolutely. Those cameras do exactly that. They help prevent the need for those pursuits, because sometimes we can just wait for the person to go to where they're going and perhaps roll up on him that way.
Thank you.
Anything to add to that, Commander?
No, I'll just add, you know, we're keeping track of all the successes that we have with those cameras, and I'm surprised at how many successful outcomes we're having on cases in the locations they're in. Once they're moved to IDOT roadways, we'll be covering an enormous amount of area, and I expect them to give us a lot more product, so. Thanks for approving those, those are great.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, then hearing none. Next item, if I'm correct, is the omnibus vote agenda? Is there a motion to approve items A through M?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any comments or questions about any of the items? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Markort.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Appenheimer.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Schenk.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if I'm looking at this right, that's it, correct? We have no committee of the whole tonight, no closed session, so anything under new business and communication anybody wants to add?
I'd like to add something to new business tonight. This past week, Vernon Hills lost a citizen. His name was Jeff Dickerson. He was 43 years old, passed away from colon cancer. Now, I don't know if you're in the sports world, in the Bears world, he was the ESPN Chicago reporter for the Chicago Bears for many years, on the radio, on TV, and he lives here in Vernon Hills with his son, Parker, who's 11, I believe. Now, I didn't know him personally, but his story is, two years ago, Parker lost his mom from, to cancer, and almost to the day. And this past week, he, his father passed away from colon cancer. So Vernon Hills, we always like to say we take care of our own Parker. I'm assuming his guardians are his grandparents. There was a GoFundMe page started for him, and I was going to talk to him. I was asking some of his friends to come in, public comment, but this morning was the funeral, so emotional day. I did find out that the GoFundMe page did just close. Their goal was $100,000. It's raised over $1 million for Parker. National news, you know, the Chicago Bears, the Seattle Seahawks, I mean, huge agencies, the Ricketts family, the Cubs, the Reinsdorf's, and how, $5, $10, $20 donations from people in town. So that was, my one request was to visit the Parker Fund page, GoFundMe page, but obviously it's been closed. My second request is to the community, when we recognize families like this, we do what we can to take care of our citizens. And I always say we start by looking in the mirror, and from what I understand, he was a, he was a great father, a great person, very actively involved with the youth sports. So keep him in your thoughts, but also, as, you know, a lot of people don't like to visit the doctor as they get older, I think it's important, you know, to get out there, get a physical, you know, to avoid anything potentially be bad down the road, so. Thanks for the time.
Yeah, JD was somebody that, you couldn't have been a Chicago sports fan, especially a Bears fan, and I don't know who JD was.
Yeah, so my, my neighbor's a very good friend of the family, actually. His son is, he plays baseball in Arizona. He's like, gonna be like his big brother, so to speak. But yeah, I met, I met Jeff a couple years ago at Lifetime, and is when his wife was going through cancer. But I'll ask my neighbor, because, you know, he's good friends with the family. I believe he's staying with his aunt. I think his aunt's gonna be, yeah. And I'll ask him if there's anything that, you know, the community could do something to reach out to Parker and, and/or the family, so. That was nice to bring up.
Anything else? Anybody under new business communication? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.